I call this meeting to order. Mr. Williams, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you join me in prayer, please?
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We just thank this opportunity that we can meet as a governing body. Just ask that you be with us as we make decisions that affect all citizens within Allegheny County. Lord, we know that you are the one who have provided everything for us, and we thank you for it. It's in your name and let's humbly pray. Amen.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our Thursday, September 5th, 2013 Public Business Meeting. Commissioners.
Good evening.
How are we?
Well, I was doing pretty good back there. You gotta go work. Work, 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 work.
Gentlemen, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda this evening?
No, sir.
None.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our August 22nd, 2013 Public Business Meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Gentlemen, we have two announcements under the report of the President. The first one, I'm sure that you all have been in training and getting ready to bulk up for this Saturday is the Allegheny County Train Pull at the Western Maryland Train Station. So that is September the 7th at 9:00. Once again, the Commissioners have volunteered to be part of any team that would like us. I have volunteered to be an anchor again, so we could just wrap the cord around me, and I'll just lean. So depending on how many people the Sheriff's Department gets and how many people the Commissioners get on their teams, we will see if the Commissioners' Cup can be won again and brought back to 701 Kelly Boulevard. Now, when he builds his office out there...
We'll just keep the cup.
We'll just keep the cup, I guess, at 701 Kelly Boulevard. It all depends if it goes back and forth. Well, we'll deal with that later. The other announcement, gentlemen, is the Make Healthy Choice Easy, the Mile Movers Walking Program Double-Up Challenge. That is a winner prize that's twice as nice as what you put in. 150 miles will be turned into $300 for the challenge winner. All you need to do to participate in the Mile Mover Tracking... Participate in a Mile Mover Tracking Card is to take your... Track your steps between September 21st and November 16th and submit the cards. Now, the county Commissioners have agreed to be part of the challenge kickoff event, and that is going to be on Saturday, September 21st, at 10:00 at the mule at the Cumberland Train Station. And I do believe that that's the exact mule that Commissioner Valentine used on the CNO Canal.
It's the one I wrote in on.
It's the one you wrote in on. Okay. Perfect, perfect. Participants get their choice of a pedometer, lanyard, or a drawstring, plus the first 100 people to get a free T-shirt. Get it... Ready to get started? Check out the Great Allegheny Passage. And if you'd like to have any more information on this, you can call the Western Maryland Health System Community Health and Wellness at 240-964-8424. I hope to have a lot of people out there. My family's going to be out there, and we're planning on tracking our steps. I don't make too many steps, so I don't have to really use my feet to count.
You've got eight steps.
So I've got lots of people that'll walk. So, okay. Presentations. Item number one, Commissioners, is the School Mental Health Enhancement Program. Dr. Raver, our health officer for Allegheny County.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krista.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKay, Commissioner Brody, and Commissioner Valentine. At your request, the Allegheny County Health Department has been working with the Board of Education this summer to develop a program to help meet the training, consultation, and counseling needs related to mental health issues in the schools. The School Mental Health Enhancement Program proposal presented addresses many areas of concern identified by the Board of Education and our counselors who are already working within the schools. Currently, the Allegheny County Health Department Behavioral Health Division provides counseling services in all but two of the Allegheny County public schools. The proposal is to expand services to the public schools to meet the training, consultation, and counseling needs related to mental health issues. With parental permission, licensed workers employed by the Allegheny County Health Department would be able to see any child in the school system regardless of income or insurance restrictions. The licensed workers would have designated times for consultation with the teachers and staff regarding mental health issues. The proposal also includes training and education for the Board of Education staff, including the principals, assistant principals, guidance counselors, and teachers. How the program works is that we are currently in the majority of the Allegheny County schools. The amount of time that we are in each school will be expanded to allow the opportunity to meet with students who previously were not eligible for services at the Health Department and to consult with teachers and staff. In addition, training will be provided to the Board of Education as needed throughout the school year regarding mental health issues. The advantage of the proposal is that it allows all children in the county to be eligible for the services. And it is provided entirely in the school, which is one of the things that the Board of Education was particularly interested in. It provides the opportunity to have the licensed staff and the Board of Education staff become more connected and work together to identify at-risk children. It designates a contact person for each school if there are questions or concerns about a child. The proposal also allows the Health Department to begin providing services in the two elementary schools in the county previously not served, and those are Bel Air and Flintstone. The trainings will be provided by Dr. Emmett Burke. Dr. Burke is a PhD psychologist and lawyer who is the clinical director at Brook Lane. The Allegheny County Health Department is fortunate to have Dr. Burke work for us part-time. He has vast experience dealing with school-aged children as well as providing excellent educational trainings. Due to lateness of the school year, trainings would have to be done slightly differently this year from in future years. The proposal for this year would be as follows: to have Dr. Burke complete one hour of training with the guidance counselors and assistant principals. They would then be responsible for and relaying information to the teachers and the appropriate staff at the designated schools. To have Dr. Burke also complete an hour of training with the principals of the school, and Dr. Burke would be available for additional trainings of up to three more hours that we would determine as the school year went on. And this plan was made in conjunction with the Board. The school employees would then be referred to utilize the licensed workers in each school if additional questions or concerns arise and to make referrals of the individual students. The proposed budget for FY14, which is a partial-year budget starting 9/18/13, is $61,108. The proposed full-year budget would be $80,173. You have a copy of the budget details, and what it covers are the non-billable hours for our staff who are in the school and for the training time provided by Dr. Burke. So, questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
No, none, other than...
Thank you, doctor. I know that was a tough challenge, and thank you and your staff for coming up with this.
Thank you. And I just wanted to introduce Kristi Coverson, who is head of our mental health part of our behavioral health, and Roger Simon, who is the head of our Behavioral Health Division. And they've been working very hard on this proposal.
When?
Along with Dr. Cox and Dr. Ben Brower at the school.
Perfect. When, unfortunately, we needed to highlight the mental illness that we have here in Allegheny County. And thank you very much for willing to help us out with that task. But second of all, I think it's really important that if we can help these young people make better choices in their decisions, they will be more productive in society and then be more productive as adults, and we can break the chains of bad decisions. And thank you very much for doing that. I think this got spurred on because of the gun rights and the issues with the AK-47s. But instead of having 80% of the conversation be about Second Amendment rights, 80% of the conversation should have been about mental health. Because if we fix the mental health issues in our county and in our state and in the nation, the rest of it takes care of itself. And so...
It'll help.
Yeah, it'll help, correct. But thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I may add, with respect to the budget that Dr. Raver and her staff have prepared, and I'm sure Pat Panuska has had the opportunity to weigh in on this, we've had the opportunity, with this information, to speak to the sheriff and with the money that has been budgeted and set aside in the 2014 budget. Appears as though we'll be able to fund the remaining portion of the program that they had presented to us for the balance of 2014. And the sheriff will also be able to, once he has obtained his MOU with the Board of Education, be able to make the hires that he was committed to making as part of the school security effort.
Good. All right. Thank you. Commissioners, item number two is a proclamation for National Preparedness Month. The Allegheny County Department of Emergency Services, Mr. Richard Dvor, Ms. Susan Lee. Do you have any words that you'd like to share before we make this presentation, sir?
We always have words to share.
Okay.
I'm going to defer comments to Susan on the issues related to National Preparedness
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, everyone. National Preparedness Month is celebrated every September. This is the 10th anniversary for this event. It was established in 2003 to encourage all of us to actively participate in our emergency preparedness activities, especially at the individual level. In our own jurisdiction, Allegheny County has experienced floods, tornadoes, blizzards, hurricanes, severe thunderstorms, extended power outages, and even an earthquake. So we each have a vested interest in our own emergency preparedness. Regardless of the type of emergency we may encounter, the more people that are prepared, the more quickly our families, businesses, and the community will recover. And one of the things that we have done this year is we are posting on the county website, on the homepage, every week, a focus feature for preparedness. And I would really like to encourage everybody to visit the county website to get this information. And I've prepared a little tiny booklet that gives an overview of what preparedness is all about for National Preparedness Month, and I'll hand this out to everybody so we can all get ready for the next storm.
Okay. Would you like to join me up here, please? Whereas National Preparedness Month presents an important opportunity for every resident of Allegheny County to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And whereas investing in preparedness can reduce fatalities and economic devastation. And whereas all Allegheny County citizens and stakeholders are encouraged to become informed about and participate in the preparedness activities presented by Federal Emergency Management Agency at ready.gov. Now therefore, we, as the county Commissioners, proclaim September 2013 as National Preparedness Month in Allegheny County and encourage all citizens and stakeholders to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work with Allegheny County Department of Emergency Services to enhance emergency preparedness in our community. Signed by all three county Commissioners. Congratulations. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Commissioner Brody, you could step down.
Clean eyes, you mean?
[laughing]
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that'll work.
Perfect.
That works.
Well, we'll get to it another time.
You know, one day we'll get batteries for that thing.
Thank you, Susan.
It's a purr, you know, very much.
Very, very nice.
There we go. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, item number three is the POW MIA Flag Remembrance Presentation. Mr. Valentine, who do you have with you today?
The lawyer. Want to come forward?
You have to fight cream, and I can hold it out while you're talking.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioners, and the staff, for the opportunity to be selected to make this presentation of the POW MIA flag. I would like to give you just a brief history of the flag and how it came about. Congress designated the 3rd Friday of September as National POW MIA Recognition Day and ordered the display of the POW MIA flag on this day and several other national observances, including Armed Forces Day, Memorial Day, Flag Day, Independence Day, and Veterans Day. Congress designated the... I'm sorry. The only flag besides the Stars and Stripes that represent the United States has ever flown over the White House in Washington, DC. Only one flag is ever displayed at the U.S. Capitol at Tunda. The flag is not the one that represents an individual state, branch of service, or other select group. It is the POW MIA flag, Prisoners of War, Missing in Action, that calls to mind the sacrifice and plot of those Americans who sacrificed their own freedom to preserve liberty for all of us. It's the presence that serves to remind us that while we also enjoy the privileges of freedom, somewhere there are soldiers who have not been accounted for and may in fact be held against their will by enemy forces. The picture of the man's head bowed below a guard tower and a single strand of barbed wire serves as a national symbol and challenge to our country not to forget. Prisoners of War, soldiers captured by the enemy soldiers during times of war, are casualties that too often can be easy to forget. You can't ignore the image of crosses lined in neat rows at Arlington and other national cemeteries that remind us of the high cost of freedom. In any gathering of veterans, the scars of war, wounds, and evidence of missing limbs quickly remind us of the sacrifice of those who fought for freedom. It is impossible to forget those killed in action or wounded in action because their evidence of sacrifice is ever before us. Sadly, the same cannot be said for those who are missing in action or who may have been taken prisoner by the enemy and never re-petritated. Since World War I, more than 200,000 Americans have listed as prisoners of war or missing in action. Less than half of them were returned at the end of hostilities, leaving more than 125,000 American servicemen missing in action since the beginning of World War I. During the 14 years of American involvement in Southeast Asia and especially the Vietnam War, more than 2,500 Americans were captured or listed as missing in action. The politics of our nation's most unpopular war could have been eclipsed a fate of those dedicated soldiers were it not for the National League of Families. As the spouses, children, parents, and other family members of soldiers missing in Southeast Asia banded together to keep the plot of their loved ones before American conscience. The organization grew in strength and influence that reached all the way to the White House. Though the League of the Missing and Imprisoned Servicemen had a voice, but by 1971, something more was needed. Mrs. Michael Hoff, whose husband was among the missing, believed that what the cause lacked was a standard, a flag to remind more fortunate families of those who were still unaccounted for. Therefore, the MIA POW flag was introduced. On behalf of the men and women from Allegheny County, Cumberland, Maryland, who are prisoners of war or missing in action, I'm honored to read their names with gratitude for the freedom they have given to each of us here today. I would also extend my apology if I've missed anyone or have spoken any name that was not listed as a POW MIA. Corporal James Rexrode-Hare remains identified January 19th, 2013. U.S. Army, died while captured POW in the Korean War. Corporal Harvey Lee Marks, U.S. Army, missing in action, remains not recovered, the Korean War. Sergeant Raymond Harrison McCoy, U.S. Army, prisoner of war, remains not recovered, the Korean War. PFC John Lee McKenzie, U.S. Army, missing in action, remains not recovered, the Korean War. PFC William Robeson Seggy, U.S. Army, missing in action, remains not recovered, the Korean War. PFC Paul Thomas Smith, U.S. Army, missing in action, remains not recovered, the Korean War. Corporal George William Walters, U.S. Army, missing in action, remains not recovered, Korean War. Sergeant First Class Michael Richard Watson, U.S. Army, missing in action, remains not recovered, the Korean War. Sergeant Richard Cornell White, U.S. Army, missing in action, remains not recovered, the Korean War. Donald L. Wright, United States Air Force, remains returned and recovered November 15th, 1993, in Laos. So with that, I make the presentation to the Commissioners and the citizens of Allegheny County, the POW MIA flag.
If we could all rise for a moment of silence, please?
Heavenly Father, thank you for these men. Thank you for their dedication and ultimate sacrifice for our country. Lord, I just pray that you be with families, and, Lord, that we never forget and are always searching. In your name, let's humbly pray. Amen.
Okay, Commissioners, item number four is National Patriotism Week. I understand that Mr. Dennis Wilson, the leading knight of the benevolent and protective Order of Elks Lodge 470 in Frostburg, Maryland, is here to talk to us.
Good afternoon, thank you. As Elks, we love our country and desire to preserve its cherished institutions, traditions, and values. Elks are loyal Americans who are proud to display and honor the flag of our country. We show our patriotism by proudly wearing rappel pins with the American flag. As Elks, we are inspired and thankful for the greatest sacrifices being made by the men and women of our armed forces who defend our freedoms each and every day. Frostburg Lodge regularly takes monetary donations to the Martinsburg VA Hospital to support the veterans. We try to do this monthly. We hold the annual Flag Day ceremony at the Elks Lodge, and we also sponsor the Elks Americanism Essay Contest. Our big event, which you're well aware of, is the July 4th Derby Day Coaster Race. On behalf of the Frostburg Lodge membership, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for their continued support of the race, and specifically thank Commission President, Mr. McKay, and Mr. Valentine for their participation this past year in the race post-award ceremony. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
It's been an honor, and we really appreciate all that the Elks do for our community. And it'd be honored to me if you'd join me for this proclamation. Now, depending on your answer, will depend on if we give you this proclamation, but my lawyer and I have been working on a question that we want to figure out how we can get me into the soapbox derby race itself. Now, I know there's this whole thing about not fitting in the car, but is there any way that we can maybe have a special race?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It hasn't been a special sport.
We don't have to... We don't have to call Mr. Nedbed for his expertise on this one.
I'll design the car.
No seriousness. Allegheny County, Maryland proclamation. Whereas the benevolent and protective order of Elks through its constitution is a patriotic order, and whereas the order promotes the ideals that the citizens of this nation live in freedom, one through the great sacrifices and many tribulations which have provided the foundation for a free, prosperous, and independent life. And whereas we realize that each generation must work to maintain this freedom. That needs to be repeated. Realize that each generation must work to maintain this freedom. Otherwise, through carelessness and indifference, the rights and liberties enjoyed may vanish. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize this freedom and to honor the nation which provides it, the United States of America. Now therefore, we as county Commissioners in Allegheny County, Maryland, do hereby proclaim September 8th through the 14th, 2013, as National Patriotism Week in Allegheny County and urge the citizens to join with the benevolent...
Benevolent.
Thank you. Benevolent and protective order of the Elks and expressing gratitude from the privilege of citizenship in the United States of America with appropriate celebrations and observances. In witness there, we have hereunto set our hands to be cause the seal of Allegheny County to be fixed this 5th day of September in the year 2013, signed by all three county Commissioners. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. See, I told you we didn't have to sue him.
There you go.
I told him if I...
here. I actually served one of his elected posts under Dennis's leadership several years ago in an organization, and the Elks is very lucky to have him as a spokesman here tonight. So, thank you, Dennis. You was a great mentor to me, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have three under our action agenda this evening. Item number five is the Action on Code Home Rule Bill 5-13, Amendments to the Allegheny County Public Ethics Law. Mr. Rudd, what say you?
Yes, today you can vote on the amendments to the ethics law. We, this was introduced several weeks ago. There was a hearing at our last meeting. This is to make two minor changes to the current ethics law at the request of the State Ethics Commission. It's increased, reducing, excuse me, the size of a gift that you can accept from $50 to $20 and increasing, reducing the amount that a lobbyist can spend before they have to be registered as a lobbyist from $300 to $100 per year.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for action on Code Home Rule Bill 5-13. Is there a said motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, gentlemen, is the Amendments to the Department of Housing and Community Development Block Grant for the Rawlings Water Project. Counselor?
I thought we had them backwards for a minute, but...
Well, we haven't moved stuff out of Rudd's office yet.
Commissioners, we've already received $800,000 in a community development block grant for the Rawlings Water System, and we've also received almost about the same amount in USDA loans and grants. Back in May, we applied for another $800,000 in community development block grant for the water project, and we were approved that, and that will now be added into the original grant and just added on to it. And I'd like to point out that the good news for Allegheny County is there were, I gotta look at my notes here, there were 15 community development block grant awards made in the whole state of Maryland, and this was one of them, and we were one of only two of those awards that received the full maximum amount that was available.
Wow.
Very good.
Good news. Good news. Any questions for Counselor? No? Okay.
I actually have one before we go any further. Dave, I'm sure there's assistance at Rawlings such as was for Mount Savage because I have got a couple calls here recently, and I've been steering them towards you, so I most certainly hope that the low-income citizens take advantage of this to get connected up to the water system. If there's any questions on this, just call over the county building, ask for Dave Nedved, and he'll...
And I'd like to emphasize about the water connection money that's available. I know, and I've said this before, I know unfortunately, from our point of view, the money comes from HUD, and they make us jump through a lot of hoops. They require a lot of documentation. But once you get past the documentation, the money, there's money available, and please don't be intimidated by the documentations that are required. I think it's kind of painless once you get past it.
And we assist them in working through that.
And I'll assist them. I really will. But people are intimidated by it, and I really, I will help them through the process, and it's not as bad as they would think it would be, so.
Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the President of Porter County Commissioners to sign the Second Amendment to the Grant Agreement with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development providing $800,000 in additional community development block grant funding for the construction of the Rawlings Water System.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Commissioners, just one moment, David. If you could help us with item number 10 on our consent agenda real quick, if you don't mind, please, in 35 words or less, you could talk to us about the Section III Plan requirements for the Department of Housing and Community Development.
These community development block grant monies ultimately came from HUD, and HUD requires, one of the requirements they have is a Section III Plan, and the short of it is they would, they want the contractors and the subcontractors that we hire to try very hard, when they hire a new employee, to hire someone from a low and moderate income household, and the Section III Plan that we, I'm having the Commissioners sign tonight, is just saying that we're going to encourage the contractors to do that.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Item number seven, Commissioners, is being brought to you by Mr. Paul Cale. This is going to be about the professional engineering services on the National Bridge Inspection Program.
If I could add to the presentation Dave gave about Rawlings, we had a meeting there back in August, and it was hearty, there was hearty and hearty there. What we plan to do is there are water bills that are sent out by the Rawlings Water Association. We are going to put in that flyer saying we're going to have another meeting in October, November, so we'll hope to get more people attending those meetings, so we'll be doing that soon. Federal law requires us to inspect our bridges that are longer with a span of 20 feet. We got to inspect them every two years. That is reimbursed 100% through our state bridge program. We get about $1 million a year to either inspect the bridges or repair them. And right now, there are 76 bridges in our county that are over 20 feet. 10 are in Cumberland, 1 are in Midland, 3 are in Lowndes County, 1 are in Westernport, and 56 in Allegheny County. The cost of the inspection this year, the proposal is $341,755 that we want to, we're recommending we award the contract to Wallacemont Gallery Associates. They have did our inspections a number of times, and we've had a number of dealings with this company, and they're a very good engineering firm, so we would ask permission to award that contract to them.
Paul, I know that nationally there had been some news about bridge inspections being behind in other states and that kind of stuff. Have we ever been behind in any of our inspections or anything like that?
To my knowledge, never that has occurred. Kevin Beechey ran this program prior to his retirement, and right now, Adam Patterson and Dan DeWitt are on that, and we've never had any problems with that.
Good, good.
Maybe we should get ahead of the ball and inspect the 15-Mile Creek Bridge that we've been trying to build for how long?
That's another matter.
I think it'd be a lot more money in that. Okay, gentlemen. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to award the contract for this field inspection and report.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Everly, what do you have on your consent agenda today?
Well, Commissioners, typically, we have a very lengthy consent agenda for your review tonight. We have nine items. One item relates to the acceptance of funding for the county's RAP program, which is administered by HRDC. We have an amendment to the county's grant agreement with DHCD for the Mount Savage Water Project to extend the time period for administering those funds. And as David mentioned before, we have for your consideration the adoption of a Section III Plan in compliance with the CDBG regulations. On the procurement side, Commissioners, we recommend that the county award the Porton McHoller Road Bridge project to Carl Belt as listed. I'd like for you to authorize a request to bid for the South Cumberland Roof Project and the Alconet Microwave Upgrade Project, which has been funded in part by ARC. With respect to public safety, Commissioners, three items. The acceptance of a grant from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention for alternative sentencing. The acceptance of a grant from Frostburg State University to support alcohol compliance checks. And the authorization to permit the Sheriff's Office to continue to participate in the Streets Initiative with the City of Cumberland as funded by the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention.
You said something about a rap?
Yes, sir. It's not one that you beat.
No, I was thinking that this was going to be, you know...
No, 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 no.
It's no music.
No. I'm telling you, in the 80s, I used to break dance, but the way I did, I called it broken dance. And I was, I could have been a good rap, a national rap star. Would you like to hear some?
Tonight, sir?
Yes.
It's still broke. We have seen it recently, and it's still broke, so.
All right, I guess we need to vote on this consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the second, the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Little Mikey.
Yeah. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Nothing further, Commissioner.
Mr. Rudd?
Speechless.
I can understand.
Commissioners? Brody?
Yes, not much, and before you start singing, just would like to thank the citizens of Mount Savage for having us over to be involved in their Labor Day parade the other day. It was very nice. It's actually looked, turned into quite an event that I know that all three of us looked forward to all year. And there is a couple, maybe a little bit of economic development news coming down the road here shortly. I'll keep you abreast of that since you and Commissioner Valentine left me be in the lead on this. It involves a few issues with the state that will soon try to get worked out, so hopefully we'll have something to report back on that. So that's about it for this evening.
Good, good, good. Commissioner Valentine?
Well, even though he's left, I'd like to thank Larry again for the presentation of the MIA flag. I'd like to mention this flag will stay in these chambers permanently, and there will be a second flag that'll be flown with the other flags outside. That flag has a tremendous, tremendous amount of meaning to a lot of people, and it's a flag that deserves a lot of honor.
Definitely, definitely. Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up, Ms. Lind? Thank you. So, I got this idea. Okay. What, you know, what if we, what if we...
Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening.
What if we did, like, themed public meetings?
What's this?
Themed public meetings. We could do like a show tunes, or we could do...
This is like the Gong Show. Thanks, everyone, for coming, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for participating in your, in your county...